The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
We ensure that all students are college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse community.
Thank you, Katie. Next is a time for open forums. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. We have one person that's registered to do that tonight, and I'll call up Rod Goldon. Two, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Rod Goldon. I live at 310 Traders Point Lane here in the school district. And I've come to you again to speak about Fund 80. I wanted to follow up from my comments at last week's listening session for the budget, and also relate it back to the discussion that the board and administration had on the October 7 meeting. And the belief that the district has that you're in compliance in Fund 80 had two points of reinforcement. The first being that the DPI had not come back following your reporting of your use of Fund 80 and what programs were in Fund 80 and the amounts, and not come back to you and said that they didn't believe you were in compliance. And they will not. The DPI is not an enforcement agency. They have no police powers to come back to a district. Earlier in their training programs for Fund 80, in the question and answers, when the question came up, what does someone do if they believe the school district is not following the proper standards for Fund 80? It refers them back to the PowerPoint training, and then back to the district itself. So it doesn't say, "Come to us, and we'll follow up." And even now, with all the schools reporting their use of Fund 80 on the DPI website, the DPI recommends school districts consult their own attorneys to determine if they're using it. So they will not police you, so they will not come back and do that. And the second item dealt with that Green Bay district's use is consistent with other school districts. That's because all the other kids want to do what the big kids are doing. So they're looking at what districts like Madison, Milwaukee, and Green Bay are doing in Fund 80, and they're following your lead in there. So consistency does not necessarily mean that everyone is right. They're following the ones that it started. So once again, I ask you to go back and take a look at the statute, take a look at the interpretation that DPI has provided, and ask yourselves, look at those for yourselves, and ask, are those programs that you have in there rightfully part of Fund 80, or should they be moved over to the general fund because they're not a part of the base mission of the school district? So again, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next, I'll call up Lori Cathy.
Lori Cathy, I live at N4606 County Road F in Bondwell. I'm also the president of the Green Bay Education Association. I wanted to share with the board and hopefully the public a great event that's happening this weekend. It's called Outreach to Teach. It is made up of approximately 200 future educators from around the state that belong to the student part of WIEC. They'll be coming in on Saturday morning and staying through around Sunday noon, and they'll be working on revitalizing both Dan's Elementary and Washington Middle School. Some of the things that the students will be doing include adding the heat logo around Washington Middle School. And the cafeteria at Washington still has the rocket ship and the blue with the gold. They'll be painting over all of that, moving it over to the new colors. At Dan's, they were awarded a grant for the Farm to School initiative, but they don't have the raised beds. So we'll be constructing nine raised beds for them so that in the spring, they'll be able to start that program. I believe there's about between 30 and 35 murals that teachers ask to be created. For example, a health class at Washington Middle School wanted a mural of the human heart. The social studies asked for, you know, a globe talking about education opening up possibilities around the world. All of this was, is possible from the donations from some local businesses, as well as a fundraiser that the GBA did, and WIEC as well. It's going to be, we're thinking between $16,000 and $18,000 worth of paint and equipment and things that'll be going into those schools. So if any of you have some free time on Saturday from 11 till 7, or Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to noon, we will be at those schools, and we'd like you to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you seen us paint? I'm bringing cake.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing no one, we'll move then to roll call. Sandy.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Franz.
Excused.
Warren.
Here.
Wagner.
Excused.
Leppa.
Here.
Veroni.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Nirvani.
Here.
Vane.
Here.
Five board members are present, two excused. We're also joined at the table by Priyanka Nirvani, who's Inter-City Student Council President, student from Prebo, and also Devon Vane, who's a student at West, also a member of the Inter-City Student Council. I'm joined to my left by Dr. Langenfeld, our superintendent, and Sandy Heller, our board secretary. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve minutes. We will be approving minutes from a regular board meeting on September 16th, special board meetings on September 23rd, October 7th, October 14th, special board meetings, closed sessions September 23rd, October 7th, and a public engagement session on October 14th.
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried 5-0. Minutes are approved. Next, I'll move to our communications, which we have no communications to be placed on file. And then we have our monitoring reports. It's a new report for us, beginning a new routine, and that will be facilitated by Mike Wecker.
Thank you, Brenda. Yes, as you mentioned, this is a first, and actually, this is a very significant time for our school district. A couple of years ago, we had school site reports, which I think were an encouraging first start because the board had never heard directly from each building principals and teachers, so... But I think there was a feeling that there was not enough substance to those reports, and that we needed, the board needed more information to help guide our school district. These school site reports, or these monitoring reports, basically came out of the strategic roadmap that the board developed about a year and a half ago. The board spent a lot of time on providing the strategic direction for our school district, and then Michelle and her staff took it from there, took our roadmap, and developed a series of vision cards that is guiding the central office and obviously each of our buildings in student improvement. So this will be the first one this evening. This will be the focus and priority schools. And just to give the public an idea, Mark has laid out a schedule for us that can be adjusted if need be. About next month, the next two months, we will be hearing from our elementary schools in January, K-8 schools; in February, middle schools; March, our high schools; and April, our three IB schools, our K-12 IB program; in May, the John Dewey Academy of Learning; and in June, our school for the academically gifted. So again, Celestine and I, who are co-chairs of this committee, have met a number of times with Mark and Kim. Most recently, we met with Mark last week. And I think we're encouraged by and excited of what this will bring to our school district and the information that staff in all our schools will share with our board. So before I bring them up, I'll ask Celestine if you would like to add something to what I've had to say.
Sure. Just briefly, you know, part of the reason why we changed this model, not just because we have a new way of thinking about how we do things, but because we also want to maximize the kind of presentations that principals and potentially teachers as well bring to the board, what kind of questions the board can ask, and then what the public learns about how our schools are doing on the parameters that we have set forth. So this is our first dipping our toe into the water. We expect that the reports are a learning process for everyone, the way that they're written, the kind of information that they put out, also what people who are listening to this broadcast can learn from them. We expect that this is a constantly improving process for all of us, and I am just ready to get ready, ready to do it.
Okay. With that, I'll ask Mark Smith and Teri Williams to join us at the table, and then they will introduce the people that are here from our focus and priority schools.
And as we're going on, when the board is asking questions, and we are hearing from our priorities schools, I'll be just taking some notes. So then, when Mike and I meet again with Mark, we can once again continue to approve the report.
Good evening. Thank you. Mike, you did a wonderful job of introducing this. It cuts my introductory comments down in half, so I appreciate that. I'll just introduce the folks that are going to be doing the presentation, and then we have some folks in the background that are here to support and answer any questions as well. So joining me this evening is Lisa Bohm. Lisa Bohm is the associate director of ESEA, and I'll allow her to explain a little bit about her role at a certain point here as well. Cory Vanertai, a principal from Eisenhower, will be the principal spokesperson. As Mike mentioned, the presentation this evening is focus and priority schools. So joining Eisenhower is Nicolay. Becky Swanson, interim principal there is here. Also, we have Diane Lehman, Fort Howard principal, and Kelly Egan, principal at Dan's. So those are the four schools that are representing us this evening. Also joining us at the table is Lori Gerke, who is instructional coach at Nicolay. So we're happy to have Lori here. And I'm going to say this just a little bit slower, just so I get it accurate. Patricia Agi Agayo, who is a second grade teacher at Dan's Elementary. So we're fortunate to have her here as well. So with that, I just offer a few contextual comments, and Mike did a nice job. The presentation that you have before you, Board of Education, is organized into two parts, an executive summary, which is a macro-level view of the progress of the four schools. And embedded in that, you see the school's current performance. You also see the role of the stakeholders, and you also see the tasks that are going to be implemented throughout this school improvement year. The second section is school progress update, which is more of a micro-level view of individual schools. And also embedded in that section is insight statements. Insight statements, along with recommended actions or next steps. The last part of that section really is our growth opportunities and then areas of celebration. As Celestine mentioned, it's important for us to message and continue to support the continuous process of improvement. And we certainly appreciate the support of the board as we work to facilitate this process and to provide you an effective communication tool, because that is, from our standpoint, really the intent of these reports. We would like to give you a tool that shows you progress around the school improvement efforts at the building level. In a nutshell, the school improvement process is predicated on our buildings implementing processes that are going to improve outcomes. Quite simply stating, I know for myself, in order to improve my overall cholesterol level, I need to exercise more regularly. I also need to have a more healthy diet. And those are some of the practical examples of how it relates to school improvement process. We know that if our buildings are implementing research-based practices, that's going to improve overall student achievement. And we have a presentation that we believe will give you a sampling of that. So I also, before I go, I know we have a number of folks that are out in the audience that are representing the schools as well. So if you're here from one of the four schools, could you just raise your hand so we can thank you? We appreciate your participation this evening. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lisa, and she'll be our first speaker this evening.
How I was involved in the process is, in working through this new report with schools, is explaining to them what the new monitoring report would look like and helping with the process to make sure that we had all voices, so that what we're representing in this report truly reflects what's happening in the schools and the teachers were involved in that process, which is explained within the report. I'm going to talk with you about the vision card measures, the outcome goals. So vision card B is the outcome goals, and that includes the PALS assessment for kindergarten and the WKCE math and reading for grades 3 through 5. And on vision card B, at the beginning of the school year, really in the summer, the schools were found to be, all four of the schools, needing significant improvement on PALS and WKCE. And their goal this year is to move at least one level on the district vision cards. How they're going to move at least...
If I could just, the first time you use an acronym, if you could relate your names, just sort of the human...
So to move back for kindergarten, PALS is the phonological assessment for the phonological awareness literacy screener, and WKCE is the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Examination.
Thank you.
So we were found, all four schools, to be needing significant improvement, and on their vision cards, they have also set a goal of increasing at least one level on the vision cards. And how they will do that is through the processes and the work that will happen within vision cards C and D. The vision card C was around high-quality learning targets and using assessment to refine instruction. And when those areas were assessed in June, they were found to also need significant growth in those areas on the vision cards. For the high-quality learning targets, though, they expect to, all four schools, be at vision for high-quality learning targets, both the posting and understanding of high-quality learning targets. And using assessment to refine instruction, all of the schools have set a goal to move at least two levels in that area. Vision card D was around professional learning communities, and they assess themselves at a level of concern also on professional learning communities, and all of them have set a goal to improve at least one level around professional learning communities. And again, it's the work that they're doing around high-quality learning targets, using assessment to refine instruction, and professional learning communities. Improving in those areas will lead to movement in those student outcome measures of the PALS assessment and the WKCE assessments.
So Cory, if you could provide us a little bit of that, you know, overall insight statement from the principal and the school perspective.
One of the great things about our team is that we get together often to collaborate and share what's going on in our buildings. And that's the process we went through in coming up with our insight statements to find out why is it that things are the way they are within our buildings. And our first insight statement is that the inconsistency of delivering curriculum and instruction, and we feel that that's really due in large part to a significant turnover in principal and teachers in all four buildings. For example, at Eisenhower, of our 30 classroom teachers, 20 of them are new within this year or last year. So in two years, literally two-thirds of our classroom teachers are new to our building. And along with that, trying to figure out what are ways that we can retain highly qualified teachers in our building, especially buildings where the job is likely more difficult because of the barriers that we're up against. And I think that's a significant piece that needs to be addressed for continuous or forward progress. Our second insight statement, we continue to face the barriers of poverty and language. Although we are seeing growth, we know that we're going to have to continue to partner with our ELL and bilingual departments to figure out, how do we address those ongoing barriers that are in our way, preventing us from seeing the student success that we'd like to. And then, of course, in all three buildings, we'd like to improve our family involvement. We know that when parents are involved, that students are going to do much better. And so we are trying to continue to grow our existing partnerships, but also expand our community partnerships to have our families become even more involved with their children's education. And I think that we are seeing small steps of progress, which is very exciting in all the buildings, but we know that that's going to be key in developing that whole team partnership from school to home.
Teachers, if you don't mind offering comments in terms of your involvement, also the process?
I feel the teachers are being involved in the process because we have always leaders from the BLT coming to our grade-level meetings to give the information about how the process is going and what which are the goals for our school. So for the most part, I feel that most of the teachers are feeling that they are having input and having participation in making decisions about the goals for the whole building. One of the things that I feel that is going really well in my school, the collaboration between teachers. We spend a lot of hours working together. And being in the district for a long time, in the past, we used to work in an isolated setting. I remember being a lot in my classroom and trying to figure it out through my curriculum what I needed to be teaching. But now, it's so much collaboration and so much learning going because we are working out together for a lot of hours doing it. And so collecting data in math and reading and writing, I feel is making me a better teacher because I know exactly what my students' needs are. So working with new teachers is good for them, too, even when they are just coming from college and they probably have a lot of classes where they learn how to collect data and analyze those data. Working with a veteran teacher, we both are learning from each other. So I think that, to me, that is a key component of the school improvement, collecting data and analyzing data and working around that, to make sure that we have strategies, ideas, collaborating with suggestions on how we can improve our student knowledge, because it's the big gaps in math and reading and math and writing that we have to do for many years, and something needs to be done. And having this collaboration with teachers is really helping us to find different strategies to improve those areas. One component of the plan is the family engagement and the student engagement. I feel that in my school, it's going really well because we want the parents to come to our building, to be part of the school community. So we have family events in the evening, and many times, we have tons of families coming with the students. And those events are around literacy, around math, storytellers coming in. It's all educational activities that we have for family events. And not just the parents and the students are participating, but also teachers. It goes on to everything else. So I feel that we are involved, and our voice is being heard. And of course, working in a school like Dan's, when we have language and we have the poverty, it's not an easy job for us. And we're working really hard to help our kids because they come to us with a lot of stress because of the family situation. But we don't want to give up. We want to keep working for them, and they have us. And sometimes, they have ideas at home, you know, and that's why we want to be there for them and look for them.
I guess I wanted to just say, having been at Nicolay for the past 20 years and seeing change over time, one of the things that I've really noticed with the new, our new school improvement process, I feel that we have really taken a look at, taking a better look at research and best practices to really kind of see what is the best practices out there for turning around schools. And with the use of our new Indistar process and our Indistar tool, we've been able to get a better insight into those next steps that would really help us develop systems change. And so all of our instructional staff teams have been collaborative in that process, and all of them involved in really studying the research and best practices, and then looking towards what do we need to do to change where we're going. And they were, all of our staff are highly valued in their input, and they had an opportunity to share their input prior to our school improvement planning process. And we even went as far as to provide staff the opportunity to demonstrate agreement or consensus on input statements, which I felt was a very important and valued part of the process. Because then, when we actually went to do the school improvement plan, we could look at what was seen as being most important to the staff, and those were the types of statements that we took into consideration when we developed our plan. So I felt like when we started to roll out our plan and create the plan, and then rolled it out to staff, we had a lot of buy-in because it was really generated and developed from them. And we were able to develop, you know, have tools for gathering their feedback, and we could always bring them up and show them that, you know, this is what you shared. We took this into account when we developed our plan, and we feel like this is an important step that you brought up, and this is the way that we're going. And I think it's that process that's going to really help us move together and move forward as a whole school. And we value highly that piece of, our leadership team takes ownership in getting organized and looking at data and getting things moving with the plan and staying on track, but then we accordion in and out, and all instructional teams are involved in feedback sharing, input collaboration, and we take it back and forth between those groups of people. So I think that teachers have felt that their opinions and thoughts are valued and they're important, and it's hard work, and the only way we're going to be able to do it is if we take that attitude of, you know, whatever it takes, and working together as a team, and I think that's really an important concept. We too have some of the same challenges, of course, of these other schools and have a composition of families and kids who are often in crisis, but when they come to school, they know and can depend on that place as being a place of stability and a place that they can expect to learn, and we have high expectations for them to learn.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, we'd turn it over to the board for any questions or comments that you'd have.
Okay. Questions from the board. I'll start out. Let's say, a year from now, October 2014, you're back here. What do you hope to tell us a year from now? And I guess I'll ask all four schools to comment on that.
So you want to shout out from the balcony? Go ahead.
Can you say, can you repeat it one more time?
That, let's say we invite you back here in October 2014. What do you hope to be able to tell us at that time? able to tell us at that time?
Well, first and foremost, would be that we have moved our data forward to where we want to be on our vision cards. But I think it's even bigger than that. I think it's more, it's about how can we set the stage for the next, you know, 10, 20 years from now through this collaborative process and ensuring that we're, you know, having, the school improvement process now, it really is very different. And we're able to have a tool now that is very helpful to us, I think, because we can go in and we can monitor in a way that can keep that data moving and taking a look at the strategies that we're using and evaluate that multiple times throughout the year in a different way. So, you know, and it's really about planning, not just for now, maybe not just for the year ahead from now, but really for the long-term process of school improvement and getting better.
And I'd say, building off of what Kelly said, it's also a whole part of moving a little bit away from the whole initiative focus and a lot more on how is it all fitting together, being able to be sense makers. So that we're understanding, this is what we're doing and is having a broad range effect. This is just little things that are trying to plug the holes and trying to just get us through. But we're actually much more systematic about, this is what our data's telling us, feeling comfortable enough to be honest about the data, and then also what do we need to learn, and what's the role that we play as adults in that student data. So, the hope is that then that would in turn change reading card D and all the rest of those.
Okay.
I can just speak from Nicolay in a day time there. I'm hoping that we will be reporting back that we're looking at a continuous cycle of improvement and that's something we'll continue to follow. That we have a stability in our workforce, stability for the children at the school in terms of the staff, while one of them being an engaged community, and that we still never lose sight of the opportunity.
Okay. Corey?
And really echoing what they said, I think, taking the approach of a growth mindset and seeing, making sure that we're making progress, heading in the right direction because it's not going to all happen overnight. I would hope that we would see a significant improvement in figuring out how to engage our families. And then, I would also echo the stability in the workforce. Because when you're making forward progress and you feel like you're starting over every year, it's very hard to keep the momentum going. And then, it requires a lot of differentiated learning for your staff because you can't continue to start from scratch for everyone in the building. So, I would hope that we could report that we've been able to retain staff. We're committed to working in the buildings that, you know, are challenged for us, for our teachers, but being able to focus on growth and not just that end result, whether they're proficient or not, but are we really making progress and persevering.
I'm going to follow up on the staff stability thing. I know, I think we all knew that there were going to be great staff turnover at Fort Howard. I think we allowed the staff more flexibility because of being a priority school with the additional responsibility, I think of 167 instructional hours this year, 300 next year. But then, I was surprised when you said, Corey, that 20 of your 30 staff are new. What are we doing in our, I guess, in our high poverty schools in particular, to retain staff so we don't have a constant churn and a constant turnover? And Michelle, did you want to respond to that?
I think that's an excellent question. I think the tone and tenor around accountability has played a very difficult role for any of our schools that face more challenge in the student population. When you have a large percentage of your outcome and your evaluation placed on student achievement, and if the measures don't necessarily measure growth, it sends people in a very, very difficult place. Because I think there's huge concern around that from that political piece. And so, I know that there are people who have made that choice to leave that school. Because it's certainly far easier to have a student who comes well-prepared, knowing all their letters and numbers that comes through the door, to get them proficient by third grade in reading, when in fact, in many of the schools that we're looking at, in fact, all of the schools that we're looking at, have a high student percentage population of students where English is their second language. As a result of that, the research says that they will not be proficient in academic language until seven years in. So, by third grade, they're not going to see that. I think that the piece around the confidence level of community is shifting with us in terms of transforming how we feel about our schools. I know that last year, we had elected officials stand up publicly and speak to the fact that Eisenhower Elementary is not a failing school, but rather that the students are making significant growth. And so, I think that we have to change the conversation in our community. I think that the conversations around cradle to career and growth are going to help our teachers. But I also think it goes back to what Ms. Gurke talked about, the fact that this is a hard, hard job. It's about perseverance, and it's about working collaboratively together. And I'm thinking that the more we work collaboratively together and are in it to win it collectively, the more confident people are going to feel about how we move forward too. I think there was a very tenuous moment historically, a couple of years ago, where people weren't sure of the uncertainty about everything came to light. And as we move forward, we want the people who are in it to win it for every child to be in these schools. That's the other piece. And to have that out there. So, probably a lot of factors coming in. I can tell you this right now, it isn't about the money. It's not about the money. It's about being able to feel valued for your work, being able to be acknowledged for how far you've moved a child that may not hit that proficiency target. And I think the more that we have tools like Indistar and some of those places that help us identify growth, and the more we can get the results of our assessments out that aren't just the one-time WKCEs, the more teachers will feel like they're making progress with kids too. So, there's a lot of, that's my take. And I love to pay in bonus money and say, keep in there fighting. But I think it has far less to do with money and far more to do with how efficient I feel in what I'm doing, how supportive I feel, and how we can partner together.
Okay. Other board questions? Oh, go ahead, Andrew.
How, as we're doing more collaborative staff planning, how much, how much time is staff spending in meetings? And how is that working out? And how's that amount of meeting time being managed, if it is?
Yeah, we get together for CLT, like grade level meetings, weekly, one hour. And also, we have another meeting that collaborate with special teachers, special ed, ESL speech. And that occur only once a month. We take turn. One Monday is first K1, and then the next Monday is second grade teachers. And so, it's once a month. Then, we have a staff meeting that also is once a month. But the time that we spend together is every week for an hour for that grade level team collaboration.
And at our school too, they meet weekly to do collaborative planning. And I think they feel that that's really a powerful time together where they can look at their student data and the student's success or weaknesses with lessons that they've created and are doing, and then they can move those lessons forward. And then, we try to balance it out with other scheduled meetings, which I think is a little bit about what she was referring to. We schedule meetings twice per month to give professional development in literacy team meetings, where we help to try and move systems change forward in our building. And then, we have our, we call them CSI, collaborative sharing input meetings, where we follow up from our leadership meetings. And that's where we have that accordion in and out. So, that's twice per month. The teachers feel like they have the input and collaboration time to share, and their voice is being heard in our planning process. And then, we work collaboratively looking at data, and that's what she was referring to. Those, more of those monthly meetings are collaborative processes between support systems so that the needs of kids are being met. And it's transferring to the classroom, which is really important. You can't have people working in silos or in isolation anymore. If we don't have that collaborative process happening, kids aren't going to transfer their learning. And so, we've got systems in place to make sure that that's happening.
Especially working with ESL teachers. Because in our building, most of the students are English as a second language student. In my classroom, 11 of my kids are ESL students, and I have five, four were English-speaking students. I have to collaborate with ESL teachers in those meetings, take space once a month. But weekly, we email each other, sending my lesson plan, she's sending me her lesson plan, we compare. And it's a lot of collaboration. So, when she comes to my classroom, because I cannot send my kids to work in her classroom, because I would be with five kids or four kids, she comes in, and we both know exactly what we both are teaching because of the collaboration that is taking place once a month.
I think the only thing, I guess, I would add to, you know, we try to utilize more of our morning times for those collaborative, that collaborative work time. And we try to leave prep times kind of sacred to the individual teachers so that they are prepared as teachers, and they have that time to themselves to be individually prepared in their classroom. And usually, often, kind of some of that, those larger chunk times are where we do more of our collaborative meeting process.
So, you adjust the staff day as adjusted earlier on those meeting days, then?
Say it again.
Well, if you have an hour of meeting and you stay away from the planning times, then those are, the staff day begins earlier on those days? Is that how you do it?
Well, our, we're a late start school, so our meetings are generally from 7:30 to 8:30, and then, they have their own time. And then, we, when they have their music artified, their special periods, we don't usually signify, say that they have to do meetings during that time. They have their own time. And then, our, end of our day's only a half hour. So, usually, that's generally to the teachers to have their own planning, to be prepared for the days.
So, uh...
No, go ahead, Katie.
Kate, go ahead.
With regard to the staff stability, we're kind of speculating on why people are leaving. Do we do exit interviews from people?
We don't do interviews, but we do an exit survey that comes in. And in some cases, if we have something planned that a person may be leaving to another district because there are concerns, I'll call them up. I will call them up and talk with them, or sometimes we'll exchange emails.
But even if people that leave one school in our district to go to other schools in our district, we do exit interviews?
Not through human resources. We don't, we do not do a formal...
Just trying to, you know, get a firmer idea of why people, I mean, we can speculate, and I think they're all legitimate reasons. Yeah, I think we saw and had a lot of conversation with staff from Fort Howard. Maybe you can speak to that, because there was conversation with staff.
I think with the process being a little bit different with Ford and along...
T, answer it. Want you before so we can get you on the microphone.
So, looking at, with, I think, the process that we followed at Ford, I thought was very helpful and insightful. And in Ford's situation, I think a great deal of it was fear. It was that they were unaware, unsure of what was going to happen and what lied ahead of them. And, you know, the sacrifice that they were going to need to be making of their family versus their work, I think, was another big part. And, you know, I continue to thank the district and HR and the board for really supporting that. Because again, they all have to, we need to have that balance. We keep talking about parent engagement. And I think the hard part is, as we ask more of our staff to be there for longer hours, we're actually putting them on that other end of the spectrum of parent engagement, where they're unable to attend some of the things for their own families. So, again, it's that huge balancing act that we had. But most people really talked about the unknown. What's the 300 hours going to be? How long are we going to have to stay? Is it every Saturday, we'll have professional learning? So, I think it's just, we always go to those what-ifs and I'm fearful of. And then, again, part is commitment on some of our schools, and we all know that we have, we're asking them to do a little bit more and above and beyond what some other schools and other teachers would need to do. And they're making the same salary. It's not always about the money, but I think it is that acknowledgement and knowing. And I think a lot of times, that became a huge part is that commitment and that dedication where the fire is burning, but there is the time when, where is that balance between school and home life in order to continue to have that fire burn for the work and the passion that they have for all the students?
So, Elsie, go ahead.
So, let's talk a little bit about the posting of high-quality learning targets. In the report, I had seen in several different places, let me go back to it. I think it was at Dan's that has an ICANN format. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, at another school, and I cannot, now I can't recall it. But anyway, because the posting of high-quality learning targets, the posting of them, the process for that, the student understanding of the high-quality learning targets, and then, the monitoring of the administration of the teachers and the teachers monitoring themselves, this is, the high-quality learning targets should, at this point in the school year, becoming something that students are talking, well, maybe not the little kids, but something that students are talking about. Therefore, parents should know about it. So, I'd like, and Mark, I think you can choose who would like to speak to that, exactly how this is going. And what kinds of, what kinds of insights are you seeing in terms of posting those high-quality learning targets?
Well, if I could just as an opening, and then certainly any volunteer, I think you'll see the progress towards the posting of high-quality learning targets and the receptiveness of the posting of high-quality learning targets, probably different from each perspective. So, we have elementary schools here that probably, as a matter of practice, have been doing something very similar as part of their curriculum. So, I think as we learn from the middle schools and from the high schools, we certainly are going to learn...
Something slightly different.
Possibly a different perspective.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe not. Yeah. So, I don't, if any principal or teacher leader would like to comment?
You had a couple of parts to your question, I guess. How's it going? Well, I think we're at a part where we really see them, and they're very visible in our school. But it's aligning them to the student's understanding to ensure that the students are understanding them. So, at this point, you know, through a walk-through, you know, I may come in and, you know, ask the student who's working, you know, what is your learning target for today? And are they able to articulate that to me? You know, those would be indicators for me coming through to see whether or not students are understanding them. And at this point, whether they know them and they really understand them. And I think there's a little bit of inconsistency at this point through that implementation of where the students are with that. So, that's something we're working on as a staff to get it to that point where it's very consistent and that you see that in all classrooms.
And so, the consistency, or the consistency is in the posting, but not maybe in the student understanding? Is that what you're seeing in your building?
Yes.
Okay. Okay?
And that would mirror probably what we're seeing in our building.
Okay.
Although we worked hard to create a common format. And so, it's very indicative when you walk into each classroom, you know exactly where they are, and students can find them, even if they transfer classroom to classroom, they, it's familiar where to look. I know that our, some of our teachers articulated that, and maybe they need to work on making that a part of their teaching, you know, better, that they're really focusing that I bring it up in the beginning of my lesson, and that's where I summatively come back at the end of my lesson. And so, making that more a routine part of the sections of their teaching so that kids really understand them. But us too, we need to have kids really be able to articulate the understanding of what they're learning.
Okay.
And at Eisenhower, I would echo what they're saying as well. Basically, through walk-throughs from classroom to classroom, we also have a very structured approach with the learning targets. And we decided to go with the ICANN status because it puts it in that first person. It takes a little bit more ownership than saying students will be able to. So, it puts, they're able to, you know, the teacher introduces it at the beginning of the day, our procedures, introduce all the learning targets for the day. But then, when the subject area comes up or that new learning, they'll review that, the students will articulate that back. And then, through my principal walk-throughs, I'm doing the same thing that Kelly was saying, basically randomly selecting different students as I walk around, and I'm doing a sample of three to five students to see, can they articulate what they're supposed to be able to do, either by the end of that day or by the end of the week, because some of them will last more than one day. But that's just, and that's from kindergarten right up through fifth grade. You'd actually be surprised, some of the younger students, how they're really catching on to being able to tell me exactly what they're able to do or what they should do. You'd actually be surprised, some of the younger students, um, how they're really catching on to being able to, to tell me exactly what they're able to do or what they should do. Yeah, they are.
They're so willing. At seven.
So then our ELA units, you know, they have those I can statements built in, but then around the math and the content area, during the common lesson planning time that the teachers have two to three days a week, um, that's where they're agreeing on what the I can statements are going to be. So there's consistency from one classroom to the next. It wouldn't matter who your teacher is in third grade, that those expectations are the same for the learning targets.
Awesome, interesting.
And I would think we're all kind of in that same boat. And I think it's also talking about student learning targets. Is it different than an objective? Is it different than what the teacher is teaching? So I think that's always the hard part as well as sometimes a little bit too broad. And what we're asking when really it's what's that skill that they're needing for that day that they're going to work on? You know, it's not writing a narrative piece. It's what portion of that piece or what's really that focus I'm going to laser focus that I'm going to be having. Um, and we are continuing to do a book study with the Learning Targets book. So that always kind of helps as well as they start to just get comfortable with where they are, then we kind of push that envelope again to ask them that next challenge of, are we here? Are we there? And where are we going now? So I think that's ideally where we think that they can be high quality by the end of the year.
Sure, absolutely.
Inconsistent.
That's right. And I think, you know, once again, checking in, yes, we're all learning. This is especially something new for, for us here from the school board's perspective. But like I said, because this has, because this has a real student piece, you know, what the teachers do in their professional learning doesn't always kind of go out and drift around the neighborhood, but what the learning targets eventually will. And so I think it's important for us to be, you know, sort of bubble up, bubble that up to the surface and talk about it. So while you're on that, Diane, why don't you give, if you can off the top of your head, give a diff, uh, uh, like a learning target versus an outcome?
Now, because a lot of times our objective is much more about what the teacher is teaching, what they kind of want. They kind of want the students to understand in a general concept of writing a certain piece. But really the student is, I can or will, and it all depends because if you use Carol Dweck's growth mindset, I can is not because it's a choice that they can have. So then it's also a different wording for do is that I will and, so you go back and forth. It's just them knowing that they have to be an active part of it. So it might be, um, I will be able to, um, write and, um, catching lead to my. So it's much more just that. So they're knowing they have one specific thing instead of, I think when we were in school and you'd go back and kind of grade or look at the writing piece, you look at everything and then you lost the real focus of what it is because some things were not good and some things were strong. So that way they knew this is my one task. So we can come back at the end and revisit it and say, okay, how did you do? Or if we have share or assessment enclosure time at the end, when a student shared out, the class is able to say, thumbs up, thumbs down. How did they do? Did you hit the target? So we're able to come back and look at that small little thing. So that's a lot what we do at the end.
And the kids really, really don't steal.
No.
Go ahead.
The, the student really, really enjoy, um, when, I, I like to write, um, the learning target together with them. I have something in, you know, I know what I want them to learn. So I write it in front of them. And we talk about what we are going to be learning and I leave it around the board. When we finish the, the lesson, I ask them, let's read the target again. Are we accomplished the goal? Yes? So, so? No. And they love to be part of the process.
All that democracy in that classroom.
And they really love to be part of that, what they're going to be learning.
Okay.
Okay, Michelle?
I just, uh, a learning target was described to me like this. You get in a car and you're riding in as the passenger and you're having a great conversation and you're going to, let's say Madison. Okay, so we all get in the car and we go to Madison. We chat and chat and chat. And then we get to Madison and then the person driving says, tomorrow you're going to drive to Madison. Now, if somebody would have said to me when I got in as the passenger in the car and said, tomorrow you're going to drive to Madison. So you better pay attention to these points along the way. I would be far better able to drive to Madison if I knew what the target was that I was supposed to be able to do and learn. And so I think that's the piece with learning targets. If a child can tell you, and I like that you're bringing them in the conversation about, here's the plan. Here's what we're going to learn today. They'll know where you need them to go tomorrow. But if they're just along for the ride, some will catch it and some won't. So you have, that's why they work so well.
Right.
Brianna?
Just to go kind of off of what, um, Celeste was saying, how receptive are both the teachers and the students to the learning targets? To kind of compare to what I know at the high school level? You know, is it just written on the board or is it in more of the sense that you were saying that you're really trying to interact and discuss the learning targets?
In the elementary school, I feel it's more an interactive, um, process. And I'm thinking back to, we did an exit survey with some of our fifth graders last year. And one of the things that he said is, I wish I really knew what I was supposed to be learning. And that's where we really went, oh, my gosh, aha. And so, you know, we're really excited about the I can statements and that system change in our whole school because I think that's, you know, going to really empower kids to really under, see this is what I'm supposed to be learning and understanding and need to do. And, um, no, it's not about recording and as the kids do get older, I think we're trying to transition them to that idea that they do kind of, some of them do record their I can statements in their planners and so that they have that, um, as a record of their learning too. But, um, and I think it's important that we also look at how do some of the I can statements build off of each other? And how is the learning a continuous cycle of, um, what I'm doing? That they're not these isolated, today I do this and tomorrow I do that and they build off of each other.
And someone also said that teachers, you know, some of them have been doing this for quite some time. So those teachers that have already been doing this prior to this new, um, initiative, how do they feel about it? Do they feel like it's being forced and that everybody should have already been doing this? Or do they feel like they've already been doing this, so it's no problem?
I think it's, um, more about empowering them to be mentors and to be peer mentors to like some of our new teachers. And that they, you know, we always are looking for teacher leaders in our building and that it needs to come from other people other than just administrative staff or coaches or, you know, it's an, it's an awesome idea to be able to say to a new teacher, you know, you should really talk to this teammate. They've got this really under control and they can really support and help you. Um, I don't, I think the one thing that we kind of encountered was more about that they were kind of cranky about that we wanted a consistent format because they already had done, have been doing it a certain way. Um, but when we really shared the theory and the thinking behind why it was important for us all to do it the same way within our building, I think it was an easy buy-in for them to understand that.
Brenda?
Um, I have a question. You mentioned improving scores on PALS and WKCE. And I know PALS, you don't necessarily can control whether they're proficient on PALS. Because the first time they take that is kindergarten or four years?
Well, it moved to our four K this, just this year.
And first grade, okay. So, so technically they come into four K and that score is not your, I mean, you haven't had any input into that or impact on that score. But I'm, I'm curious and I, I just asked this out of curiosity, not to put more on your plate. But I didn't know if you had had conversations in terms of how you might, um, because you've got families in your schools with little kids that are going to be to come, coming in. And if there are ways to, um, help families to, um, work with their younger kids, um, to, to help improve your PALS scores coming into four-year-old kindergarten. Obviously the kindergarten first grade one, you can have impact on, you know, at least for the kids who are in your four K program. But, um, and again, I, this isn't to put more on your plate. I'm just curious if you've had conversations about this. And partly I ask because we've been involved in the, um, conversations around the, um, strive model, which is really a cradle to career model in terms of how do we support our birth of four-year-olds in the community before they get to our schools? But, um, um, I just didn't know if there was anything you were doing in your own schools around that.
From Priority School, something we're looking at doing is making an adjustment to our parent teacher conferences. And it's something that's coming through West Ed and through some research and it's APTT, which is Academic Parent Teacher Teams. And actually what it does is it's three sessions that family or parents would be spending with, um, staff members and actually teaching them about how we're teaching literacy, not again, them being the experts, but what are some of those basic things in math? And being able to, um, empower them in order to take some of those same skills home. So we start to talk about in first grade, this is what we're looking at. So the hope is as we empower them to feel they can do the little things, that, that will make a difference. So they would have three different learning sessions and then the goal is that you would have one or two thirty-minute, um, conferences. But you actually are setting goals. So then it goes kind of back to targets where you would set individual targets with the students. And so at home and at school, we can be having conversations about what you're working on and making them much more specific so it can even be carried over to home. So if we're working on impulsiveness or something like that, that again, we can talk about at home. What are some things that were impulsive and how are we going to set some goals with that? If it's the reading portion, you know, we're getting away from the way that I was taught reading. So we're going to sound out letter by letter, which actually will conflict with it. So that's one thing that we're trying to work on for this spring and next year is to do that and see if that is helpful when we're actually instructing them.
Something that's come out of the Indistar research is, um, creating a school community council. We have a team of teachers right now who are kind of in the planning, um, process from now until January. Figure out how we can outreach to parents and increase their involvement. It's, it's, it's different from a PTO. It's, it's a kind of a parent decision-making, um, partnership where they, they become more involved. It's not about fundraising. It's really about developing the curriculum of the home and figuring out how to connect the home. What can they do at home that will support what the children are doing at school? Again, that seamlessness so that they know what they're doing, their practices are helping their child and connecting better. Um, right now there, there's not a model out there like through the research. So that's why this team is kind of figuring out what are some ways we can, um, reach out to our parents even off campus uh, in, in different areas using the community as different sites to offer those, um, those opportunities for discussion. We've also just started to talk a little bit. We have a monthly food pantry at our school. And we're trying to figure out when we get the parents there, what can we do with them when they're there? Um, as a small, like whether there's rotations of rooms, even if it's thirty minutes, something that could have a high impact because, you know, the turnoff of that's incredible. The last one had two hundred seventeen families. So once a month, if we can get, again, it's, it's trying to figure out resources and staff. But figuring out what are some small ways and get some small victories with the parents so that, um, they can start to feel some immediate success and connection to the school. And then hopefully that momentum will keep going.
Michelle?
Just as a follow-up, and we were at a public hearing last week and a person, a parent got up and talked about the academic booster club. So we may want to pursue that group and see what they're doing because it sounds a lot like what you just shared. And maybe we can learn some things with them, but we really like the name. We gave her several names. But I, but I really think that's what we're talking about is to help boost the academics and club, like setting for parents.
Anything else from the board? I guess I would, oh, Andrew, go ahead.
So you, you have Saturday meetings or people are just worried that you were going to have Saturday meetings?
For us, they, they were worried that they'd be at school till eleven o'clock at night and that there'd be required things all the time on Saturdays.
So how often is there a required thing on the weekend?
Right now, there's not.
Okay. Does that mean that there, does that mean that there might be, uh, not including something that might be like a community day or something? I mean, is that?
I, I would hope that it went with that balance. Now, as Mike said, we add the additional, you know, we have to add another hundred and fifty, somewhere thirty some hours. Plus that additional professional learning time. I'd hate to see that that's the direction that it would go. But I think when we don't know and when the rules kind of keep changing, everyone goes to that fearful part of it.
And one of the things we had talked about last month, and I think we're talking about on the state level, is that we need to change the state law that prohibits school from starting before September first because now Fort Howard is going well into June. And I think to get those three hundred hours in, you're going to need to start before September first, correct?
Yes, or you'd be going, I mean, or they're adding another forty minutes to an hour to school today.
Anything else from the board? I guess I would like to finish just with asking this. I mean, there, the four schools here have a lot of similarities. They're all high poverty schools with a lot of transancy, but you also have a lot of differences. I'd like each school just to talk briefly about what is your greatest challenge and what has been your greatest achievement? So whoever wants to speak from those schools.
Um, I'll say for us in general, right now, as I look at just being new to Fort, our greatest challenge is getting our students to believe that they're learners and that they're capable of being learners. Um, I think it's been ingrained in them that they can't do it. And they have these defense mechanisms that when something gets hard or something I'm unsure of, I do the fight or flight. So I shut down and I know all kinds of strategies to get myself out of that. Um, so I think that's been a challenge. And I think the other challenge for me, which I've articulated to the staff and to parents, is in three years, I don't want the staff to have to say, when someone asks them where they work, to say, I work at Fort Howard. And the response to be, oh, sorry, or I can't believe, or a parent saying where their kids go to school and having someone say, oh, that school's not a very good performing school. Where it should be much more pride of being there. So that's one of our big things of really changing that home mentality overall. And then I would probably say, um, celebration for us right now is we had the Ready Set Instruction, which was spending almost thirty-five hours where I had over thirty staff members that came and wanted to be part of the professional learning. And a staff that I believe is truly on the same page and wanting the same thing. Where I think we have enough staff that are saying, this is where I want to go. And yes, we believe in what we're doing and not waiting to say, oh, this too shall pass or hopefully that, that won't happen. So I think that is a celebration for us is that we have a staff that is really wanting to move in the same direction.
Good.
Um, I think, I think a celebration for Dan's is the structure that's in place for student behavior. The PBIS and CHAMP that's implemented very well at the school. I was, um, coming on board. I'm extremely impressed at the process and the, um, the implementation with fidelity and all of the structures that are in place for our students to be successful, knowing that without good beha, without engaged behavior, we will not have students who are, um, wanting or are getting the results that we would like academically. So that's a huge celebration. Um, I think one of our challenges is really retention of staff. We have, again, this year, all, we have three brand new special education teachers. So when you have an entirely new special education staff, really it's very, very challenging to continue to move things forward. Um, however, that being said, we've really tried to put some things in place to support those staff teachers. We have a new teacher CLT that's once a month just for new teachers. Anyone who is new to the building or moving to a different grade level has an opportunity to participate in that CLT so that they can bring questions. They can learn the supports, knowing when you are brand new coming in, you don't know who to know. You don't know who to ask because you don't know, you don't know where to go. So providing some of those structures for them so that they know that they can bring their questions. They know names of faces and they get to learn what those, what the roles are there so that they can go to the right people to get the questions answered and the support.
Okay.
I would say one of our biggest challenges has been the staff turnover. You know, last year, not only did we have myself as a new principal, we had a new dean of students, we had a new secretary, we had a new custodian. When you think about the daytime secretary and custodian, the joke about they really run the school. And we all started brand new plus thirteen new teaching. Thirteen new teaching positions on top of that. So, um, as much as that's been a big challenge, there's also a celebration part. Everyone who was hired last year did stay, at least for the second year. So we're going to figure out how to continue to maintain, um, those staff in our building. And I think probably one of the biggest celebrations honestly is just seeing how much more comfortable the parents are in reaching out. Um, more so this year than all of last year combined, the number of parents who are stopping in, asking how they can help their child with math because it looks so different. Or saying, my, I'm just having a tough time with my child at home. I don't know what to do anymore. Reaching out to our dean of students, going in to talk to teachers. And I think that those are really great glimmers of hope because they're taking that initiative and feeling safe and comfortable in approaching the principal, the dean or classroom teachers and recognizing that they play an equal role in their child's success. So I think that, um, that's probably the biggest celebration. Because again, as we recognize, one of the biggest areas that we, that's so important is having parents connected to the school. And the more they are, the better their children will, will do. And the, the children themselves see that they have a lot of people around their team. They got their parents fighting for them. They got the teachers fighting for them. They've got the principal. And they see that they've got a great, great support system sharing them on.
Um, at Nicolay, um, I think that we too are experiencing, some, experiencing, um, some issues with transitions in leadership and, and in, um, teaching staff and that has been difficult over time. And, um, I think.
And I think, you know, I've been there for so long and I know that that sense of community and that sense of family of being together, even being there for each other, is really important. And so as much as we can, we want to keep building that momentum that our teaching staff feel like we're there for each other. And I think that that's important because I think a part of that, something that is really positive is that we do collaborate and we have that cohesiveness. And we try to build that with our families also. In the beginning of the year, a big celebration of something we've done over time for quite some time has been Ready, Set, Go conferences where families come in and we have an individual conference with every single family just to establish that connection piece and to show the value of getting to know them and that they're important and valued in their child's education. And I think that that's a really important piece. And it's our, it's our expectation in our building that 100% of our families, starting whenever they do, that they get that piece. They always start with that conference piece. And so that's important. And when you have that collaboration and you have that piece of people all working together and we're all on the same team, it doesn't make those barriers seem so rough.
Great, thank you. Mark, any final thoughts from you?
I just want to thank the team that presented here today. Terry and Lisa helped orchestrate it and all the other folks that are back at the buildings who did a tremendous job in preparing. And there's certainly growth opportunities in terms of the report out. And we can plan on debriefing and soliciting feedback, but very happy for our first, first opportunity to come before you.
Appreciate your willingness to do that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Board, also thank you very, thank you staff for being here. Thank you for all your hard work.
Teachers being here. Not, not the principal.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our report. And as you said, next month will be the part of our elementary schools.
That's right. And then, you know, just a word to the, now I know that Mary and Chris aren't here because Chris would have 14 things to say, but if you have any other observations after, you know, thinking about the report, anything that you need to augment, upgrade, delete, please let us know because we will be circling back with Mark. Same thing for the students as well. If you see something in the report as you're reading it, something that you, even from your own student perspective, since you're high school students, that you think maybe needs to come out, please just email one of us.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move to the superintendent's update.
Thank you. I just have the calendar on my update today. We're moving into November, which is really challenging in my brain. I know that Friday, we have a day where students will not be present and staff. So that's this coming Friday. It's not on this upcoming calendar in November. But on November 4th, we will be moving, and that's very soon, into the Teaching and Learning Work Session Meeting, as well as the organizational support to meet and follow, beginning at 5:30 right here in the boardroom. And then our regular board meeting is the 18th of November at 5:30 here in the board meeting. And then, of course, Thanksgiving recess is the very end of the month, the 28th and 29th. But I want to remind folks that we are going to have the budget process one more time to hear from the public engagement prior to the vote, which is next Monday here in the boardroom on the 28th. And that is at what time, Sandy?
5:30.
5:30. So again, if there are people, and I'm inviting the community again, and I'll be talking to principals tomorrow again to, you know, I know that the board wants to hear from our community about the budget. If there's anything that they appreciate in terms of the investments and strategies that you have taken to support children and learning that you'd like to hear. If you have questions or concerns, I know that you would like to hear them as well. So that's the messaging I'm using this week. But again, we've got the budget hearing at 5:30 next week here in the boardroom on October 28th at 5:30. So that concludes my update.
All right, and then, thank you, Michelle. Next, the legal update. We have no update this month. And then we'll turn to Priyanka for the Inter-City Student Council report.
Thank you very much. The first things I'm going to talk about is having to do with all four of our high schools. So as you know, we had our first quarterly meeting this past Wednesday, and everybody was very excited about that, especially our first-year members. Our first debriefing at Perkins was very exciting and everybody was very just enthused to have that conversation. I guess it was their first time really having that contact with all of you and they were very excited to have that. Next, we had our first annual Battle of the Bands a couple of weeks ago at Preble, and that was very exciting, given that it was the first year. And there will definitely be more to come, given the enthusiasm across the district for that. Also, most, at least three of our four schools had a Dig Pink or Spike Cancer Night this past month. That is the volleyball games that take place where we are raising money for breast cancer awareness. All right, so at Southwest, they are the conference tennis champions, so yay Southwest. They are having a reconstruction of their student council, getting a new advisor, and just really building it up again. And the members of our ICSC were very excited about that. West recently had a civic music concert, and that was a national choir. And that was a very big achievement over at West. Over at Preble last week was our anti-bullying and our bullying awareness week. On Wednesday, we had testimony from two different students that came in and talked about their bullying experiences. And it was a really powerful week at Preble, and it was just a really good spirited week. And everyone was really prideful of their being part of it. Over at East, they won their homecoming football game. So East Athletics, I'm not saying anything, but the ICSC members at East High School were very, very excited to have won that game. I am not biased. November 1st is the East High School Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat Musical. We have many members of ICSC participating in that and as well as many people over at East. And that is something they have been working on for an extraordinary amount of time. And I'm sure it will be one great musical. And also over at East, they have started a peer group, which has to do with bullying awareness, suicide awareness, and drinking alcohol awareness. There's similar groups to that. I know we have one over at Preble and I'm sure they have one over at Southwest and West also. So it's nice to have that being started over at another one of our high schools. So that is all for my exclusive.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go to the Legislative Liaison Report, and that will be facilitated by Mike Wecker.
Thank you, Brenda. First item is the Common Core State Standards. As we mentioned last month, the Senate and Assembly both have set up committees to hold hearings around the state regarding the Common Core State Standards. There was a hearing last Wednesday in Fond du Lac, and we had an outstanding team go down to testify. Michelle and Brenda, along with Mike Fries, Nancy Chartier, and Stephen Miller. And their, the testimony that they were intending to give is attached there, but that isn't quite what happened. And I'll let Michelle and Brenda explain to everyone here what exactly happened at the hearing.
It was nothing like what I could have ever anticipated. We, basically, the hearing started at 2:00 with a invited guest. Actually, they had three invited guests. The first one was a pair from DPI, two women that presented, gave examples of Common Core and things like that. Then we heard from a woman who was from Massachusetts, who actually helped to craft the Massachusetts State Standards, not the Common Core, but the ones that they were working under prior to that. And she spoke, I think, for about 45 minutes and answered questions for about another half an hour. And then we had a third speaker, a professor from UW Oshkosh, speaking to the, basically, to the evils of Common Core, just for a quick summary statement of what he was concerned about. And then one of the senators actually got up and gave a short little speech of his own. So at 5:30, three and a half hours after the public hearing was supposed to have started, they started hearing from the public that had been sitting there for, many of us, we got there at noon, and did not call people up in the order of arrival. They picked random names out of the hat.
And as they did at the Joint Finances Committee hearing in here, the way, the order you signed up, but that was the order that you testified, and that's normally what you do at a public hearing.
Very.
So it was, it was random, you know, we had no idea if and when we were ever going to be able to speak. And between the five of us, as the time was dwindling away, we realized the chances of all five of us speaking was probably zero. So we made a decision that if one of us got picked, we would turn our time over to Dr. Langenfeld, and she would be the person to speak from our district. So at about 6:15, I think, my name was called.
What's that?
And so Dr. Langenfeld did give her testimony. And then we actually had, had decided we were going to leave at 6:00. But Michelle spoke and then Judy Sargent got up to speak, and so we stayed to listen to her. And she actually spoke for probably about 10 minutes. They let her go over and then they asked her a lot of questions. And I guess, I mean, I could go on and on about it, but one of the concerning things was that as soon as the three and a half hours of guest speakers were done, about half of the committee left. And so a lot of the people from the public speaking were speaking to only half of the senators and representatives who were there. Less than that? Yeah, at times it was less than that, but so it was, it was, I mean, it was a very, just, I mean, the whole thing was, was not a, we did not leave with feeling like we had accomplished anything for that day. The other part of it is just interesting that it's, yeah, I mean, the Common Core has been around for about three years. It was approved three years ago and then adopted by our state. And districts across the state have been working hard to make sure that by the time we have our smarter, balanced assessment given to our students next year, that we, our students will be prepared. So we've created, through our curriculum cycle, we have our language arts and math curriculum that's been completely redone, many, many, many hours of teacher time, administrator time, to create that curriculum, to make sure it was aligned with the Common Core. And now, all of a sudden, three years later, people are screaming about the Common Core. And it's, to me, very disheartening that, you know, and I'm not, I mean, I'm not an expert, so I can't stand up here and say the Common Core is the best we can come up with. But it is what we have right now, and it's what we've invested, districts all across the country have been investing time to, to align to those Common Core State Standards. And why now people are thinking that it would be a good idea to ditch the standards and rewrite some new state standards? I'm not sure why they think that that's a good idea. It was, it was good, the woman from Massachusetts, who, I can't remember her name, Dr. Stotsky?
Scott.
Scottsky, something like that. She did say that the Common Core State Standards are much better than the Wisconsin standards that we've been working with for the last 15 years. So, but she doesn't feel that they're as good as what Massachusetts used to have. And so she's kind of advocating that we, you know, look at Massachusetts' old standards and pull those up and use those. It just seemed like, it just seemed like a mess. It was like a circus atmosphere. It was just, it was very surreal and, and I have no idea what's going to end up happening with all of this. Some of the senators seemed, some of the senators wanted to jump on the bandwagon of the guest speakers that had come, two of the three of them speaking out very vocally against adopting the Common Core. And, and then others of the senators were really working hard to ask really good questions of some of the, of the public that came. And, and you could tell they just were really trying to understand, you know, what the implications would be if we ditched the Common Core at this late date. So anyway, I'll stop there and if you have questions.
It's just lame that half of them or more than half of them left.
Yeah. After we sat there through their guest speakers for three and a half hours.
Michelle, would you talk about kind of what you're following up to make sure that everyone gets copies of our testimony and what you've done?
Sure, yeah. We, I drafted an email that I'll be sending to all the legislators and just defining and affording them an opportunity to really look at what we had to say. I think that the piece that's difficult for me to, and it's very difficult to understand how something could have gotten this far down the road if it was that disastrous and bad in the state of Wisconsin, but it's across the country. And I think what was difficult or interesting is that it was very challenging to understand what points of view you were hearing. So for example, the woman they flew in, and we don't know who they were, but the person who was flown in as the expert from Massachusetts spoke firmly in support of standards, just not these. And then there was, and, and it was because the teachers didn't have a voice. So that was interesting. And then there was the gentleman, professor from Oshkosh, who basically said the federal government is taking over and that the standards were a result of Bill Gates and, no, Rahm Emanuel.
Arne Duncan.
Arne Duncan coming together and doing Race to the Top. And that's how they lured everybody into the Common Core. So there was a set of standards that we were all going to buy into, followed by testimony about Obamacare.
Oh, boy, really?
Yeah, it was all connected and woven together. And so by the end of the evening, as whatever you, okay, we just kept pulling back and saying, okay. And the other superintendents that were able to speak and Judy Sargent as well, we all agreed it was better than where we were, that we are moving forward with these standards because they are better for kids. Our testimony focused on the cost that we've invested in the district in time and resource to support moving forward. And it's not that you would continue forward if it was bad. I mean, I think that the piece that we, the district embraced the Common Core because you could see that it was valuable for our kids. I think there is certainly an understanding when you have a high population of students who are highly mobile, that a set of standards of what kids can know and be able to do and demonstrate at each grade level, moving anywhere across the state and anywhere across the country, would have great value to our kids so they're not falling behind. So again, we'll reiterate those facts forward on our testimony. But it's interesting, I know that Mike Fries, who is our Executive Director for Secondary Teaching and Learning, or Director for Teaching and Learning for Secondary, shared a video commentary testimony from New York State that looked very much and sounded very much like what we experienced, that it was supposed to be a public hearing and turned out to be a large discussion from people internally, the Department of Public Instruction or whatever they're calling at the state level, in, in support of, you know, experts against, and then occasionally allowing the public to actually weigh in. So it's all very interesting and it's a conversation going across the state. And I agree with Brenda, I have no sense of where it's going right now.
It sounds like the committee was in search of some standards for themselves. I mean, how do you have a public hearing and not permit the public to speak? I mean, that's absurd in the state of Wisconsin. And I will tell you, the number, I was actually just emailing somebody recounting the issue at city council with the roundabouts on military. The number of hearings that we had about the roundabouts and about many different things, and we heard from people who were completely irate. They were really upset, and as you can tell, we don't have any roundabouts on military, right? So completely irate. And so we sat there and we listened to people's comments because that is what we're supposed to do with elected officials.
Well, I think what was also, came to light in the middle of it all was that not everybody on the committee was even aware that these speakers were being brought in to, to do their, and so one of the, one of the legislators sitting there as part of the committee asked the chair of the committee about the agenda and why the committee wasn't informed that this was the agenda and it wasn't the public hearing, because they were expecting what we were expecting. And the committee person was told that had she asked for an agenda, it would have been provided, but since she didn't bother to ask. So I think there's a little, and it's, it was filmed. So I think there's a little, and it's, it's, it was filmed, it's on Wise.
Wisconsin Eye.
Wisconsin Eye, so. Yeah, it's, it's, that was enlightening for me.
The Assembly also has a Common Core committee and they have not scheduled hearings yet. But I think in the past, when Senate or Assembly committees, they want information from experts, they will schedule meetings and this is the meeting, we're going to hear from experts on both sides issue. And then we're having a public hearing at 2:00 and then that's when the public speaks. To mix the two like that and not really alert people that you could sit there for four or five hours before you speak and then maybe we won't call you to speak anyhow. That is very public unfriendly, so.
Well, you know, there've been many critiques of the Common Core in the New York Times. And the problem with this type of hearing, of course, is that you don't really hear from people, so the committee members themselves will not hear from people who can really offer a reasoned critique of the Common Core. And that, that is what kind of concerns me as well. Because I think there, because, not that the critique means that the Common Core has to go by the wayside, but here is the critique, here are the issues, here are the, the things that are great, and now, now what do we do? Although quite frankly, right, the curriculum is still up to the local level, even though we have the standards, right, is reset the curriculum because that's how school districts run in America. So I, 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 so, but even with that, you know, I, I'm concerned when people sort of set themselves up with experts who really can't quite give them an appropriate analysis and critique of something that is as interesting and new as the Common Core.
You know, I, and I think the major problem is that most people are mixing standards and curriculum, all lumping it together. I was stopped by a homeschool parent recently, you know, railing against Common Core that federal government's telling you what to do, school boards will have no authority because the federal government's telling you what to do, this is all coming from President Obama. And it's, you know, you try to explain that, no, and I said, well, if you ever get to the point where the federal government is telling local school boards what to do, I said, I won't be on the board any longer because I don't want to serve on a board that has no local authority. So that's, those are some of the things that, so this is going, I mean, it's going to go into next spring, I think. And conceivably, there could be a vote in the legislature to abolish the Common Core and start over. I don't know what that, what that does to school districts.
And then what happens to smarter, so let's just say that happens, what happens to smarter balanced assessment?
Well, you know, what's interesting is that the assessments are fully funded in this budget, state budget.
Interesting, funded by the state, give money from the feds?
No, from the feds.
From the feds, so then if they don't do it, then they have to give the money back.
It's in the, it's in the state budget.
But, but they talked about taking money from the feds when Stotsky was talking. And they asked, where did you take federal money?
Yep.
That was interesting.
There was a concern voiced by, there were quite a few people from the public that, you know, were, mentioned that we were turning children into robototrons by having them all, you know, be, meeting the same standards. And just, it was just interesting, the different perception.
Those are going to be retinal scans of the kids taking the test.
This is somebody who's never seen one of the Algebra I, the out of, the first year Algebra CCSS or the geometry, anyone has ever seen, or even the, the language arts from ninth and 10th grade, these people who've never laid eyes on these questions. Because if they laid eyes on these questions, they would know there's nothing robotic about these questions.
Their marathon analogy was quite effective. Well, to me, it explained.
Yeah.
So anyhow, if people haven't read the test, there's excellent testimony, that you can read it up there. I'd like to go on, I'd like to go on to charter schools and then also there's another bill that I just got an alert from WSB on. WSB has testified against the charter school bill. And there was a recently revised version which greatly expands the number of entities other than local school boards that may contract for the establishment of independent, non-school board authorized charter school. Expanded list of authorizes now includes the chancellors of all UW system institutions, the dean of the UW colleges, all technical college district boards, and all CISA boards of control.
Wait, so, I'm sorry, so that means, I think I read that in the newspaper, that means what?
That they can, they would be given the authority to charter a charter school. And now it's local school boards, it's in Milwaukee, it's, I think it's the city of Milwaukee, and UW Milwaukee also has that authority. This would expand it statewide.
Let me ask this question, how, how, so let's just say Tom Harden decided to charter a school and he wanted to charter, because there are rules about entrances and exits and how many bathrooms and what square footage you have to have per grade. So how, so I guess my question is, how does an entity like a university meet the standards for opening up a school besides buying one?
I was going to say, if I understand this accurately, and I'm going to go back to a meeting I was invited to several months ago about charter schools, it's my understanding there were for-profit charter companies who go, one out of Michigan that was present at the meeting, and what really, they just need authorization and support from. And that's what we've seen in Milwaukee, for example, where, where different entities can authorize charters. They really are often and can be for-profit companies that come in and then they will just put their stamp on them and then be, be behind them. But in other words, and you start to look at the data and you start to recognize that the charters are not very successful in Milwaukee. And I can provide all that data. There was a recent report that came out too, and a piece of research that I shared with that committee and I'll send it forward to, to folks as well, talking about major, Washington DC, for example, had a lot of charters, Milwaukee's had, and not successful, a lot of closures over the years.
But there, but these are places that have, like Milwaukee and DC and like Brooklyn, these are places that actually have buildings that are available.
Well, this gentleman talked about that he could build us a $9 million building here in Green Bay.
Oh, I see.
It was interesting and, and I was, the, the discussion then was that we're not really interested in that right now. So there was not a follow-up meeting.
So we will monitor that and WSB is opposing that bill. And I just got a legislative alert Friday from Dan Ross Miller. The Assembly Committee on Criminal Justice has scheduled a vote for October 31st on a bill to allow off-duty law enforcement officers and former law enforcement officers being armed in schools. And that reflects what we do in our school district. That is not a problem. But the committee chair, Joel Kleinfish, from Oconomoc, has introduced an amendment that would allow any person with a Wisconsin concealed carry license or an out-of-state concealed carry license to go armed in a school. And that is very concerning.
That scares me.
I think we don't have this as an action item. I think maybe Michelle and I can discuss this after and then maybe we can have Barb contact our lay. I, I would think police officers would be very concerned about having anyone with a concealed carry wandering around our schools with a gun. So we can, we can talk about that later on how to react to that.
And can't, don't you have to be 18 to carry a gun?
Doesn't that mean the student, high school seniors?
Yeah, exactly.
If you have a concealed carry permit, I guess, I mean, that's what the amendment would allow.
Alrighty then.
By the way, he is the husband of the, he is the husband of the lieutenant governor.
Oh yeah, that's right.
So we probably need to react to that.
We do need to react to that. Yeah, let us know.
Okay. And finally, I just want to bring up the Legislative Advocacy Conference, November 9th in Stevens Point, and a family of months ago, let Sandy know. The, just briefly, the agenda in the morning has session on statewide vouchers and regional independent charters, what lies ahead and what are the funding implications for public schools. Then there's meeting the challenge of a new competitive environment, new perspectives on community engagement, learn critical lessons about community engagement from two districts that are at the forefront of the new competitive environment, which is Green Bay and Beloit. And Melissa Theo Coller will be joining me on the panel along with a couple of folks from Beloit. In the afternoon, there are sessions on sharpening your district's legislative advocacy. And then there will be a session with Senator DeLuther Olson, Chair of the Senate Education Committee, and Representative Steve Castell, who's Chair of the Assembly Education Committee. So if you want to go to that conference, let Sandy know and she will register you. And that concludes my report.
Great, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Good work, everybody.
Next, we'll move to the system reports. First, we'll be teaching and learning facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We had one discussion item, it was a special education service delivery model update that was very informative, and we had no action items. There were no other matters allowed by law. That concludes my report.
Good one.
In less than two minutes, that I was wild.
No, it was like five seconds, good job. All right, thanks, Katie. And next we'll move to the organizational support and that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, we had no action items under business and finance, and then moving on to human resources with action items. Action item number one, I move the termination as listed.
Second.
Any questions? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
I just have a point of order. I'm going to be voting no on several of, of these and saying why each time, it'll only be a few seconds, but I'm going to. You're not allowed to speak against your own motion.
Would you like me to make the motions?
Yes, I can still second for the purpose of discussion, but if you just switch the order.
Okay. How do you feel about this next one?
I don't know, so I'll.
Do you want to just make?
Could she just make all the votes?
Just make them all.
Just read them all.
I would move that the employment of Kiran Razindan as manager of facilities support services, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, is presented, be approved.
I'll second.
Any questions? Andrew?
So is this, is this replacing someone who was in management or is this, this is not changing a position that was non-management to management, it's just replacing a manager?
It, it is replacing a manager position, but it is a position upgrade because we placed it on a higher salary scale. That came before the board a couple of months ago.
Okay. So although, although I think the, the person is, is very well qualified, I'm going to stick with my promise that I'm, I can't vote for administrative upgrades, raises, new positions until we've taken care of our, until we've taken care of our, the rest of our staff. It has nothing to do with the person nor the need to have a strong person in this position. It's a timing thing.
Anything else? Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Becker?
No.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi. Carried 4-1.
Kiran may be in the audience, I'm not sure.
Oh, is she?
Does she want to stand, Kiran? Recognize her.
Welcome.
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 All right. I move that the transfer of Margaret Largnoy's High School Associate Principal, eleven months at East High School, to Middle School Associate Principal, 11 months at Washington Middle School, as listed, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, is presented, be approved.
Second.
Questions? Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carried 5-0.
I move that the table of organization be modified to reflect the addition of a 1.0 FTE Student Information System Manager, 12 months at a salary group to be determined, and that the associated job description is presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Andrew?
Once again, my, my no vote does not reflect not needing a 1.0 FTE Student Information System Manager. It's a position the district does need and I support it, but it should be discussed after staff has received a raise.
Any other comments? Sandy?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
I move that the table of organization be changed to reflect the elimination of the 1.0 FTE Manager of School and Community Relations and the addition of a 1.0, whoops, I just scanned it. 1.0 FTE Director of Communications and Public Relations, 12 months, at a salary group to be determined, and that the associated job description is presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? This is a new job description, we haven't seen this job description before today, so we have comments on the job description. Andrew?
Oh, just saying, my, my no vote is because of the timing and because this is an upgraded management position before staff has received a raise. Conceptually, I'm fine with this moving to a director level position after the staff gets a raise.
Anything else? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Becker?
No.
Carried 4-1.
I move that the job description for the Human Resource Specialist is presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Andrew?
Same as my previous comments regarding timing, not the need for such a position.
But this is just a job description.
This is just a job description, this isn't hiring.
This isn't hiring.
So we already, did we already create it?
This, this, if you vote on this, this position will be posted. It's a job description, but it is a change in a, from a clerical position to an exempt salaried, non-management, non-contracted position.
Yeah, that's kind of a, that's kind of a gray area for me, but I learned 10, 11 years ago that if you're in a, in a gray area, play it, play it safe and vote no, so.
All right, Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Becker?
No.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Carried 4-1.
I move that the job description for the Student Learning Advocate is presented, be approved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Sandy?
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carried 5-0.
I move that the consent items is presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions or some grant applications? And then, okay, Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Carried 5-0.
I'd just like to point out that Marnie Bruns might be in the audience, she.
She had to go.
Oh, she did, okay.
She was here.
She.
That was Mike Frayley.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to point out that Marnie is going to be our first administrative intern and she'll be placed at Sullivan School. That's a new position.
I just see her sitting next to Mike Frayley.
And who, where's she going to be?
Sullivan.
Okay. Which is what we talked about.
Yes, so if she'd been here.
Okay. Oh, that's too bad.
Points for persevering.
Yes. Talking about a long meeting, nobody talking, right? Are we going to get an update about how things are going since that's kind of a new administrative intern?
Yes, I think so. She'll be assuming the position to be determined, yes. I, I think so because the focus really is trying to get the person in more administrative work and give them some supervisory responsibilities so that we can really see how they're doing as an administrator rather than getting more, so involved in student discipline, which is what some of the deans end up doing.
Right.
Okay.
There were no other matters allowed by law, and Andrew's reports, that's, can go to you?
All right. We do have a closed session. I will read that notice. Thank you, Jane.
There were no other matters allowed by law, and Andrew's reports, that's, can we do?
All right. We do have a closed session. I will read that notice. Thank you, Jean. Special Board Meeting, Closed Session, is scheduled for Monday, October 21st, immediately following the adjournment of the regular board meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c). Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(f), considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, is likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit personnel matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-e, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, to wit employee compensation. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
So, wait.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Flacka?
Hi.
Carried 5-0, and we'll meet across the hall.
What's your tomorrow?